And three, two, one.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order this October 2nd, 2023. Meeting of the Pierce County Council in Monday's study session. The time is eleven oh four AM. All members are present. Item number two is review of tomorrow's Tuesday, October 3rd. Council meeting agenda. Ms. Long to brief the council.
Thank you and good morning. This is tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting agenda. It is amended. We'll start with your consent agenda and there's a lot on here for introduction and scheduling. To kick off your budget season and other items. So we'll start with one under ordinances. You have twenty twenty three thirty S. This is adopting the up twenty twenty three update to the sustainability twenty thirty Pierce County's greenhouse gas reduction plan. This was forwarded as substituted without recommendation at CDC on August seventh. And you'll be setting the final on that one for October twenty fourth. Next is twenty twenty three forty three. This is amending the salary classification plan relating to the assessor treasurer auditor executive and sheriff salaries. As recommended by the Citizens Commission on Salaries for Elected Officials. This is for referral to rules and you'll be setting the final on this one for November fourteenth. Next is twenty twenty three fifty two. This is the tip in the fourteen year ferry program. This is for referral to EIDC. You'll be setting the final on this for November fourteenth as well. Next, we have twenty twenty three fifty four. This is the sewer improvement program or the SIP. This is for referral to EIDC. Again, November fourteenth final. Next is twenty twenty three fifty six, and this is declaring certain county owned real property as surplus. This is the old settler cemetery property. This is for referral to rules. You'll be setting the final on this for October thirty first. And next we have twenty twenty three sixty. This is the surface water improvement program or the SWIP. And this is for referral to EIDC again in November fourteenth final hearing date is being set. And then finally, in the section, you have twenty twenty three sixty two. This is amending chapter two one oh six of the code entitled purchasing. You'll be sending, you'll be referring this to rules and setting the final for October seventeenth. Under file actions on your consent, you have two confirmation resolutions. The first is our twenty twenty three one forty three. And this is confirming the appointment of a new member to the Pierce County Parks and Recreation Citizens Advisory Board. And next you have our twenty twenty three one forty four. You'll be, this is confirming the appointment of one new member to the Pierce County Agriculture Advisory Commission. There are four grants tomorrow and Mr. Bookie will be explaining those shortly. You have one proclamation under section seven that is proclaiming October twenty twenty three as domestic violence awareness month in Pierce County. And that was requested by both council council members Hitchen and Krueger. Under section eight ordinances, you have one item here. It's twenty twenty three forty two S. And this is modifying the effective date of ordinance twenty twenty three twenty four. This is to align repeal dates of previously adopted ordinances related to petition filed with the growth hearings board. This received a due pass as substituted at rules on September twenty fifth, and those are your agenda items for tomorrow afternoon's regular council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Are there questions about the meeting agenda for tomorrow's regular meeting? Let's see any, as indicated, there are four grant requests on the consent agenda for consideration. Mr. Bookie to begin briefing.
Thank you, Chair Mello. Paul Bookie, council staff. The first grant, and there are four grants. The first is from the Human Services Department. It is from a competitive grant with the Washington State Department of Commerce. For one million dollars from July first, twenty twenty three. Which has already occurred to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, which is of course the state biennium. It is. It's a request for proposals from counties to rapidly deploy flexible funds to support and stabilize newly arriving refugees like those. From the Afghanistan conflict and the twenty twenty two Ukraine Russian conflict. Human services will subcontract for the majority of this project to provide assistance to eligible households, which could include but is not limited to. Paying for rent and housing needs, transportation, healthcare, food, employment, barrier removal, clothing and other essential items or services that are deemed necessary to help stabilize. Eligible refugee individual and family households. The due, the due date of the grant is the end of this week, October sixth. This Trish Crocker from our Human Services Department is here to answer your questions.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bookie or department staff? We'll begin with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Excited to see this coming forward. I think this will help in a lot of work that we've been doing. Question for the department is, I'm hoping that you will be working with our more recently formed commission on refugee and immigrant affairs.
Yes, council member Campbell, Trish Crocker for the record, grants coordinator for the Pierce County Human Services. We will be working with Korea, the Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs to help us in both. Help forming RFP and helping to coordinate efforts during the the project periods.
Thank you. That was one of, one of the reasons we created the commission was for when opportunities like this come forward. We have someone we can work with who's grounded in the communities that we seek to serve. Thank you for your work on this. Hope we get the grant.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is great to hear. Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair. And I think this probably also goes to Ms. Crocker. While I know we have a significant number of Ukraine refugees coming into the community. We also have refugees coming into our community in smaller numbers from the Northern Triangle, the El Salvador, Honduras and Guatemala. Along with Venezuela. And I was just curious if this would be, if refugees ended up here. It would be available for use with them if if somehow they connected and were looking for supports.
Yes, this funding is similar to the previous biennium spending for Ukrainian stabilization, but the legislature broadened it. And so while Afghani and Ukrainian refugees are specifically called out. I, I asked in the information session about this, about other refugees and yes. Other countries refugees are eligible. We've also seen some Angolan families who are coming through our homeless system. And so we're really wanting to broaden this to be able to continue to work with our Ukrainian families and expand. Those populations that we're able to serve with this funding.
Thank you. Wonderful to hear. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer Krueger.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the information. I'm, I'm wondering, do we know who might apply, what groups would be eligible to apply for this? This funding, not that they are, but who might or who is eligible that could apply, what, who's in the the pipeline now?
Well, this funding is open to both private nonprofits and for profit agencies. And we've already had people contacting us who are interested in one need to know if we're applying for this so that they can apply for the subcontracts. So we, we do have a number of people who are interested and then we will also broadcast widely. Among the, the service providers to see who else may be wanting to apply for these funds.
Are you able to disclose who is inquiring? I'm just curious what kinds of service providers? Who they are.
So we've had mostly interest from agencies that were, have, are currently serving Ukrainian families. But they are, some of them are refugee immigrant family service agencies as well as. Service agencies that serve a broader audience who also serve refugees.
So you're not able to identify specifically what the name of the organizations are at this time? Do I, is that what I understand?
Um, I, I don't want to possibly conflict with the RFP fairness process. So I am hesitant to name specific.
Would you call her later? Okay, yeah, maybe I can just chat with you later.
Okay.
Yeah, and do we have an idea of the number of immigrants that are here now and the expectation?
We do know that a conservative estimate for the Ukrainian population, which is the one that we have the best data for, is just over twenty six hundred. Individuals as of July. The special counsel general for, for Ukraine estimated that back in February that that was closer to six thousand. But this funding is specifically for those in the greatest need. And some of those families have come with more resources and aren't necessarily coming to us. We don't have exact numbers for the other immigrant populations, but we're looking to see what we can find before we turn in the application in on Friday.
Okay, and I'm wondering, is, is a capacity identified regarding what can Pierce County handle? Because I mean, what if a hundred thousand, not that that's a real number, but does if twenty thousand came or, or an additional ten thousand? What is the capacity of Pierce County or is, is that a question that isn't asked?
Well, this funding would not, one million dollars would not be sufficient for that. We are expecting to be able to serve around twenty five hundred individuals with these funds. Because there will be a mix of the lighter touch things like the clothing and household items that we distributed directly last year. And then the deeper case management and employment and housing resource navigation that our subcontractors did.
Right, and this probably really isn't a question for you, though. I'm just curious. If the county has estimated a capacity of the number of immigrants that it can support coming in. You said, but it's really not a grant thing. I'm, I'm just, okay. Just check somewhere else. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer Row.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I think my question is directed towards kind of on the same track that council member Krueger was talking about. Is mainly the housing part of it. Obviously, Pierce County doesn't have enough low income housing to house our own population, much less. A immigrant population. If I were a private homeowner that opened up my home. Would, would I be eligible for cost rent?
If there were a lease involved, yes.
Okay, and that would be a lease that would have to be drawn up between myself and the family or the individual. So I don't have to be a. Nonprofit or anything to receive those kind of funds?
No, the, there was a variety of land awards that were reimbursed for rent. In the last contract and I assume that that would be the same case with this one.
Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, for another chance at this as we discuss our refugee families here in our community. I know within the, at my time at the city of Tacoma to help manage some of the refugee. Populations we had coming, we adopted part of the welcoming cities program. We're actually the first one on the West Coast to do that. Has Pierce County, do you know? Have we adopted as part of the welcoming counties? Because if we're looking at, throw a number out there, a hundred thousand refugees. Welcoming counties provides a process by which to help us identify, connect and. Either help them locate in or intra or nearby counties. Are we part of that? Ms. Crocker, do you know?
I am not aware of that.
Okay.
Sorry.
And I don't think we are, and come from member Hitchen. And maybe that's something that we may want to look at because if we're concerned about twenty thousand refugees coming in and how we're going to handle them. Perhaps we need to be proactive and look at some of the strategies that other cities and counties have used. To be able to bring, because when we talk about. The Afghanistan refugees and how are we going to take care of those who took care of us while we were on their lands? Or we look at the Ukrainian refugees. Sometimes a, a broader, more proactive process may put us in a better position for the next. That will happen and do serve those who we have. So perhaps this will also be a good chance to. Move that conversation forward. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Crocker, I don't see any other hands. I'll just ask my brief questions. But first note that this grant application does not require a match from the State Department of Commerce, which is great to see. And thank you for bringing this forward as has been indicated. This is really important work. Not to presuppose who will end up. Earning the subcontract awards. But if they are folks who have existing contracts to do other kinds of services with Pierce County. I, I really hope that the human services team and the finance team are working now to figure out. What needs to happen to those contracts that they can be amended swiftly. So that we can get the dollars out the door to help these families. We can't wait months and months to get contracts in order. We, these families are in desperate straits now to be housed and fed and supported. So again, not presupposing who's going to earn the request for proposal awards. There are a limited number of folks who have this sort of expertise and these developed relationships and ability to work at scale. So I just wanted to really. Hear that the, that the department is starting to get their relationships in order and administrative processes in order so that we can work swiftly to get the dollars out the door.
Yes, Council Chair Mello, we are going to be working on the RFP concurrently with the application. To try and have it ready and just be able to put in the amount. That has been awarded to us by Commerce at the time that we're awarded so that we can get this process going as quickly as possible. To make sure that the contracts are also getting started as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that. Thank you for taking the work so seriously and pursuing this opportunity for these immigrant families. I don't see any other hands. This grant report authorization will be appear on tomorrow's regular council meeting agenda. Thank you, Ms. Crocker, for making yourself available.
Thank you.
Excuse, excuse me, I have one more hand, perhaps before you leave us. Customer Morrell.
Thank you. I just thought of this. Ms. Crocker, is this only, this grant can only be requested from the county? Or can cities apply for this?
That is correct, Council Member Morrell. This is only open to counties.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. And I'm, I, I don't want to. Well, Ms. Crocker is not the appropriate person to follow up on some of the systemic, more holistic issues brought up, especially by Vice Chair Campbell. I, I, perhaps that's a question we posed to our, I don't, I don't want to lose that. I think it's a really important thought, Vice Chair Campbell. I know you're already ruminating about how to pursue that. I don't know if we ask our commission to do some thinking and make some recommendations, but. I didn't want to make that thread go unheard, but I, I know you know how to pursue it.
I think we have Human Services that budget on Wednesday, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Crocker, again. Moving on, Mr. Bookie to the next one.
Thank you, Chair Mello. There's three more ones. They're all from Public Works. So the first one is two hundred and twenty fourth Street East, State Route seven to Seventieth Avenue East. It is federal, it is a federal grant. It is competitive national highway system asset management program. It is in our tip. The grant amount requested is one million four hundred and eighty four thousand two hundred dollars. There is a map in your item. You can see there it's in the Elk Point. It starts in the Elk Plain area and ends in the Graham area. And Mr. Clint Ritter is on the phone, is on the line to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. I want to continue to thank you for adding the maps upon our request so we can orient ourselves easily as we review these. Are there questions for Mr. Bookie or department staff? Customer Hitchen.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm pretty sure this just goes directly to Mr. Ritter, but can you remind the council and any member of the public that may look at this, what the three R program is? I think I remember, but.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Hitchen, good morning, Clint Ritter, Planning Public Works. So the three R program is DOT classification and basically it stands for restoration, rehabilitation and repair. And that any pavement preservation type projects such as the ones that are before you today with the NHS Asset Management Program. Are classified as three R and it has to do with the eligibility of work and some, some other details. But essentially, to kind of keep it simple, it has to do with pavement preservation and associated work that would be needed with those projects.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought, but just thought I'd double check. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Customer Row.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Ritter, if we were to get this grant, does that? Allow us to, I know it's in the Transportation Improvement Program. Did we allocate any dollars to this overlay? And would we be able to then shift those dollars somewhere else?
Great question, Councilmember Morrell. So two of the projects, there's three applications total to this program, which I'm sure Mr. Bookie will go over shortly. But two of them, the two twenty fourth and seventy second. Were projects that were identified as part of the larger three R program itself. And so they would be projects that were identified in the next six years within our annual asphalt overlay program. That program is funded entirely through county road funds. The third project, the Canyon Road Project, which I'm, again, I'm sure Mr. Bookie will get to. That is a project that's already specifically identified in our tip and has existing federal funding. So that match that currently is shown is also county road funds. That it definitely, I guess, the, the short answer would be yes, it would free up additional county road funds. That could be used for other types of eligible projects within the six year tip.
Thank you for that answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Sorry, mine's actually on the third item, so I'll wait till we have the discussion of the third one.
Okay. I haven't seen any other hands on this one. Mr. Bookie, the next.
Thank you. I believe the next one is the Canyon Road. County Road Project fifty nine sixty one Canyon Road, one hundred and sixty, Sixtieth Street East to one hundred and thirty eighth Street East. Funding for design construction of an asphalt overlay for Canyon Road from one hundred and Sixtieth Street to one hundred and Thirty Eighth Street. This is the federal grant. It is competitive. The request is for two million dollars. Over the next three years and the CRP is the, part of the tip is attached. There's also a map. So you guys can see that. There it is. So this is north of Brookdale Road. So Mr. Ritter, can you answer your questions?
Thank you. Are there questions on this second Canyon Road item? Customer Row.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Mr. Ritter, is this just a continuance of the overlay? Program that happened this summer on Canyon?
Yes, it is, Councilmember Morrell. The project that happened this summer was also a federally funded project. That we received preservation funding through the Puget Sound Regional Council. And so this is essentially, it's a different funding source, but same objective as that project.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I just remembered watching this project take place over the summer and the challenges that. You had doing these overlays with the traffic that's on Canyon. So, but much needed as far as the freight corridor goes. Thank you.
Haven't seen any other hands. This item and the previous item will. Be on our regular meeting agenda on our consent agenda for consideration to authorize. The final grant authorization request, Mr. Bookie.
Thank you, Chair Mello. This is Seventy Second Street East Canyon Road to Waller Road. So Canyon Road on the east, Waller Road on the west. One million seven hundred thousand dollars. This is a federal grant. It is competitive. Through the National Highway System Asset Management Program. You also have the excerpt from the tip. On the next page and then the map, the satellite map. So you can see there that it's. Seventy Second Street East. Waller Rose to Canyon. Mr. Ritter, can you answer your questions?
Thank you. We'll begin with Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. Ritter, I, going from Canyon, I see that we enter, I guess, project start Waller. But that's two blocks outside the city of Tacoma. Why wouldn't we just start at the line with the city of Tacoma? And do the whole project from the city Tacoma line to. It's not indicated on the map, but it's about two blocks to the east.
Yeah, great, great question, Councilmember Campbell. So I'm assuming I would have to verify, but I'm assuming it has to do with the pavement condition of that segment between Waller and the city limits. That it is in better condition, for whatever reason, over historical preservation of this roadway. And so that's likely why they have very specific criteria on the NHS program in terms of both pavement condition. And IRI, which is the ride or roughness value. Very specific conditions as far as what is fundable within this program. And so we take our, our segments, take a look at our pavement management system and look for those segments that were identified that fit into that specific criteria. We also align that with our own internal pavement management system and our six year plan for our three R program. And this particular segment from Waller to Canyon was specifically identified. So again, I could check the, the details as far as the, that other two segment, the other two blocks, but I'm assuming that's, that's the reason.
Okay, if you could, I, I will concur that Waller to Canyon is. Particularly by the time this gets funded and done, we'll, we'll need that. I just know people get frustrated when we do that and then the next year we come back and do the other two blocks and, you know, why didn't you just do it all at the same time? So if you could look into that and if there's any way it could be stretched or if it's anywhere, just so that it's not coming back and redoing it a year later. Secondarily. If, if this budded up against the city of Tacoma, how much do we coordinate with municipalities, say, hey, we're doing the road up to? Perhaps you want to make sure that you align because there is a significant drop off in the pavement quality once you. Exit the county into the city along this segment. Would also like to see us extend those bike lines as far as, as deep into Tacoma as we could if we did redo. Between Waller and the city line. I know that was two questions there.
Yeah, no, understood. So we definitely coordinate anytime we, one of our projects touches the jurisdiction of another agency. We absolutely coordinate throughout the project life. Many times when it comes to construction, there's different permits and agreements that might need to be in place. To allow us to do that work, whether it be staging or traffic control. Or, you know, specific technical details as far as where the right of way line is and allowing us to, you know, go pave through an intersection or something instead of. Stopping just short or stopping midway or things like that. So this is something that we definitely, if it. So this is something that we definitely, if it were to go to the city limits, we would absolutely coordinate. Obviously, as you know, improvements beyond that within the city are a little bit out of our control. But we would, we would absolutely let them know what our plan is and the schedule of the project.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, customer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Agree with Councilmember Campbell as far as coordination goes. My question is, when you do these overlays, you also do approaches to the intersecting roads? Is that included in there?
It is generally, it somewhat depends on the specific intersection, depending on whether there is existing sidewalk and what the curb ramp configuration is and whether this asphalt overlay might trigger additional improvements. But generally speaking, we do go back to the curb radius return where there are those facilities. If there are no, you know, sidewalks or any type of curb, generally we will go straight through the intersection. So there would not, we would not wrap around the intersection in those cases. But like I said, it kind of, it's a case by case basis as far as that determination.
Okay, and just just for everyone listening, this is actually where you grind down the existing asphalt and do an overlay. So you're not adding another layer of asphalt.
Correct.
Okay. And then I know this in Councilmember Campbell probably is where this 72nd Street from basically, I think it was Vicari on down to Canyon. You, the engineering department did a major change in the lane configurations on this corridor and ended up losing a lane. I assume you're going to maintain the corridor the same as it is today.
That is correct. It will not change the roadway section. It will be put back and striped as it is today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Mr. Ritter, thank you for making yourself available to answer our questions. But this grant authorization request will also appear on our consent agenda for authorization tomorrow. It is everything in preparation for tomorrow's council meeting agenda. Just pausing to make sure there's no other hands. Customer Kitchen, will you be reading the proclamation tomorrow?
I had not had a conversation with Councilmember Krueger, so but it, okay, it appears that I am.
Thank you. Thanks to both of you for bringing that forward. Thanks, customer region. Let's move to items to re-review of committee agendas for the week. Ms. Long.
All right, thank you. So this afternoon at 1:30, you have a Community Development Committee meeting. You have a handful of presentations this afternoon. So first up is the Park Impact Fee and Conservation Futures Fund expenditures. That will be with finance. Next is Sustainability 2030 Progress and Greenhouse Gas Emissions Reduction Report. And that will be with Planning and Public Works. Next, you have the Electric First Policy Implementation. This will be with finance. Next is the South Hill Governance Analysis Update with Planning and Public Works. And then finally, you have a briefing on Senate Bill 5290 concerning consolidating local permit review processes. And this will be with Planning and Public Works staff. Tomorrow morning, beginning at 9:30, you have a Health and Human Services Committee. You have three presentations. First is the Family Support Partnership. This will be with the Health Department and the Sumner Bonnie Lake Family Resource Center. Then you have the Senior Center Funding Recommendations with Human Services. And finally, Youth Prevention, Youth Violence Prevention Allocation Advisory Committee Recommendations with the Human Services Department. At noon is your regular study session. In addition to your usual topics under other business, there will actually be two executive sessions. One is to review the performance of public employees. And the other is related to pending litigation. So there are two, and you'll see that on tomorrow's agenda, the two separate citations. And at 3:00 PM is your regular council meeting. On Wednesday, beginning at 9:30, you have a committee of the whole. And that morning, you'll be hearing from Human Services. On Thursday morning, beginning at 9:30, you have another committee of the whole. And you'll be hearing from the Sheriff's Department. Also including, I believe, no, just Sheriff's Department, Sheriff's Department and Corrections is together. So and then at 1:30 that afternoon, Thursday, is another committee of the whole. You'll be hearing from Superior Court and Juvenile Court that afternoon. So those are the meetings for the remainder of this week.
Thank you. Are there questions about the committee agendas for the week, customer Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. With the cows, do we know when the packets will be available or anticipate when the packets will be available?
Just so the October 4th committee, the whole meeting packet, get into our emails as we've been in this meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Bookie, to further clarify.
October 4th meeting, Human Services got a set information. Staff has looked at it. And they actually did, I think, a pretty nice job. We are wait, we are still waiting on one packet for Thursday. We have two of them, but one staff has made contact this morning. And we were told that we would be expecting it here momentarily.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Don't see any other questions for the committee agendas for the remainder of the week. That brings us to item four, discussion of administrative items. Ms. Marie.
Good morning, Julie Mary, Chief of Staff. I wanted to use a little bit of this time to give you an update on where we are with the class and compensation study. Hopefully by midweek, we will have from the Human Resources Department some finality in terms of the comparables that they're using both internally and externally. I've been meeting with them weekly to review that. And I will describe it as the tyranny of the middle. Either we have counties that are so large that they have capacity, basically people who are doing work singularly, either for, for example, with the, some of the clerks positions, some of the IT and operations, or they're so small that those are, those duties are diffused amongst multiple people. And so currently, our best comparables have been with Snohomish County, in some ways with the state legislature. And in a few instances, some of these larger counties, which do have chief councils and clerks in a series versus a singular person. But you'll maybe be surprised in some instances where we've thrown out jurisdictions. For example, King County is not a good comparable for Councilmember A because they are allowed a budget and wide discretion in terms of how they salary. And there really is no range or grid for that position. And so in those instances where it really comes down to, and I've had several conversations with multiple counties, Kitsap, Clark, Snohomish, King, Thurston, where it, that county may fit for a particular position, but not for all the positions because it just depends on how the work is distributed and how it is spread. So I'm hoping to get finality with that this, at the end of this week. I want to bring up an issue that will come back to rules and operations potentially to here is because this one does affect the IT and Operations Coordinator is I'm looking to add lead worker responsibilities to that position. And that was not something I brought to rules and operations. And I'm kind of bringing it to you today. And that's in reference to, we are looking at hiring an administrative position that will assist the hearing examiner. That would be an actual position within the council. But that is not a task for which we could have a full time FTE. And so what we have been looking at is not a clerk, but actually, and I'm talking to HR on Friday as to what would we classify this person to be? Because it is something that we need to have some legal, paralegal experience with. And then other administrative duties. So there are things that I would like this position to do. I think that that can be support to the policy staff, but it's much more of an administrative role than it is a clerking role. And we should, and I want to talk to HR to make sure that we are accurately describing the work this person would do and paying them appropriately rather than horning them into the idea they are an assistant clerk. Because in fact, they won't be working for the hearing examiner. But there will be sort of more of a package of work to do that I am looking to actually have Priscilla direct more on a day to day basis that that work is being done. Very similar to what the Assistant Clerk Receptionist was doing and whether it was one of default or design. When I came here, that was an extra higher position where I really deferred in large part to Priscilla managing that person's work, whether it was making sure the little refrigerator is stocked, two supplies are being done, to the notices going up. That person did a broad range of duties, lightening the load of the clerks, of myself, chief counsel, whomever. And so it will be one of these sort of odd lot positions. But I want to have Priscilla really making sure that those items are happening because most of them relate back to functions she's doing. A good example is like the whole setup for the joint sessions we did with the Port of Tacoma and Port of Seattle, making sure that the tables are done, that the agendas are out, that the waters there. I mean, it is, that was much more, hopefully it looks seamless to you. For those of us who are working on it, there was a lot of pre-planning to make it be that seamless that it's kind of a load on everyone. And I would like the clerks to really be doing clerking work and not spending their time on the admin work that really kind of bubbles up from everywhere. So I wanted to bring that to your attention now because we will have a discussion at Rules and Operations to the positions in the reorg for which you have added supervisory responsibilities and have not reflected that within their job classification or their salaries. And one of the things that have come up quite frequently in this class and compensation study is, is that a duty and a responsibility within the position? Because it is one that is work. It is help, you have assistance, but it is work to manage people. And that was something that happened to several folks in the reorganization. We did not do the work in advance to sort of reflect that. So I'll bring that to rules and operations. But that is with performance audit. Mr. Bookie, Mr. Dominique is our, what are we going to do there? And I would say that it's kind of come up to me from HR to say it would be a break from their guidelines to not make a change and reflect that. And I'll just remind the members, much of the county's guidelines were incorporated into, by reference into the council's guidelines. So that's how these conversations come up. But it's come up often in the class and comp study as what are the duties? And we should rely less on additional duties as assigned and actually reflect these important duties within people's jobs and pay them appropriately. So that's part two of cop and class. So I'm happy to answer anyone's questions now. But we are sort of getting from sort of the general search to much more now the data.
Thank you. And we're on schedule to meet the deadline council established for that work.
We are, if I do some extra work this week. So we are still moving to that because I think I'm trying to get, just for the members to understand, I'm trying to get the ship sort of straightened on all of these issues because they all bleed into the council's budget. And I will either use time here or Tuesday study session, but there needs to be a discussion of the council's actual budget. There are not, a lot of these changes are reflected in the executive's budget. That also is somewhat by design with me talking to finance because there is such an outstanding issue with the comp and class study. But you do have to think for the next two years in terms of what is your staffing profile? And have we accurately reflected all these changes in the monies the council will need going forward? So doing it now has the advantage of having that in your budget and not having to look at that in like a supplemental environment or in an environment of like scarce resources because we forgot to, to assume, for example, the promotion and creation of the deputy position. Like right now, those are not included in the budget. So we kind of have to have this discussion in tandem of the future, the next two years.
And we did not, we purposefully did not, weren't ready to give that information for the executive's proposed budget. And we always knew that we needed to amend the budget accordingly, depending on what the council was going to decide with the implementation of our reorganization. So I want to be clear, it's not that the executive didn't put it in his proposed budget. It's that we, we said we would amend our needs in, through our budget process. Ms. Marie, while we have you, can you briefly summarize the decisions made on hiring in rules and operations this morning, please?
Got, so thank you. So Lee Beth Merrick has been promoted to the position of Senior Policy Analyst for Human Services. And I use the term promotion because that's what the county uses. But I want members to recognize that she competed amongst all the other applicants in this regard. And that's kind of a common, I would hope to be a common practice. It's sort of my mindset and management is that our own staff should compete for those additional positions. And so she did apply, was the top choice of the interview panel and was approved today in rules and operations for that promotion. In addition, since that in itself creates sort of a backfill position is the council hired Andrea Kelly. And she comes from the Superior Clerk's Office. She is currently the manager of their pre-trial services and works on their true blood diversion program. And so I think she'll be a great bridge between the criminal justice system and the human services system. And she is also coming in as a senior policy analyst. And to Councilmember Morrell's point this morning, she will be sort of shadowing, I think, Lee Beth in the short term. And then we will determine assignments with, with respect to leading committees probably next year when we, when she has her feet on the ground a bit more. And we can see the skill set and the division of labor between the two committees or three with the Select Committee on Homelessness.
Thank you, Ms. Marie. Are there questions for Ms. Marie? I haven't seen any, thank you. A great promotion and a great hire. Excited for those two individuals and the benefit the council and the public will receive. That brings us to other business. I'm going to invite Mr. Bookie back up. I've asked Mr. Bookie to orient the council as we now invite in most of our departments to the council for a series of community of the holes to learn about the executive's proposed budget. I wanted to make sure that before we had our first one, that we were oriented to what we're asking departments to present on. And so, Mr. Bookie, this is an orientation briefing about what we should expect and some of the information we've received that we're going to receive from departments and some of the information we've received from the executive per our request. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Mr. Bookie, for the orientation.
Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bookie, council staff. And I think we had that resolution pulled up. Resolution, resolution that the council passed earlier this year requesting certain information come with the budget. So the rest of this discussion really is surrounding that. They, they have given us that information. And we'll go, we'll go through that next slide, next one page. There you go. Up there, and then that goes on into council priorities. So if you can go by that, and then we'll get to the next item. Okay, so here's our presentation. And this is the template that we've had, we've used now for several budget cycles. We keep tweaking it and we get, we get input from folks or you just know after you've watched the certain budget things like, ah, this hasn't been really work. Or another thing I base it on is if we get a lot of questions from the departments, like, well, what does this even mean? It's probably not a good slide. So we either fix it eventually or the next go around or we, we make tweaks to it or we just get rid of it. So in this one, this is a new slide. The Council 2024-25 Priorities, Budget Priorities. You work very hard on your priorities in general and your budget priorities in particular. On your priorities in general and your budget priorities in particular. And in with discussions with, with the chair, it became clear that this is going to be a, a theme throughout the budget process. Which is, we're, you know, down to about six weeks is all. And, you know, are, are they meeting these needs, right? Are, are, does the budget address these items? And these are, are pretty general. So now we're going to get into specifics. So next slide. So this is the org chart. This is, came from prior. And this is just to help everybody's understanding. I always say. There's two reasons for the PowerPoint. To give the department an opportunity to speak to you, but it's also on TV, right? So, so I always try to keep that in mind that this is a visual medium. We put everything on TV. So it's very important for, so folks can understand, oh, that's what they do, you know? And so the org chart, I think, is an important part of that. And I think you'll see that most departments now do a pretty nice job of this. Next slide. So this is divisions. This is really impacts your larger departments. You're going to see one, human services right away with a lot of different divisions. Public Works is another one with a lot of different divisions. All your, all, all your large departments, you know, there's some that are going to be, okay, I'll give you some divisions, but it's really pretty small. The functions, but that's why we did this. So everyone can understand this is where these things fall in this department. Next slide. Functional areas. This is just FTEs by functional area. This gives you some idea of where all their, all their people are, not necessarily where all their expenses are. But in most cases, especially in general fund departments, that's going to lead you to where mostly expenses are. Next slide. Critical needs and challenges. This is one we've had the last couple of times. This is just to give you kind of a larger viewpoint. This is really the department's opportunity to say, hey, listen, there's, there's a train coming down that track and we don't know. Or, or they'll tell you, yeah, we've, we think we've taken care of it, or we don't know what's going to happen next, right? There are legislative changes coming down the track that right now we are not prepared for. This, th- this is a, a, a slide where they, they are given some leeway into their, into their challenges going forward. Next slide. This is the department's priorities and this is the priorities that they've, in, in case of executive departments, it'll be worked out with the executive. The case of the independently electeds in the courts or the superior court anyway. It'll be their priorities and they're also going to tell you whether or not those priorities have been addressed in this budget. Next slide. And there, this is where we're going to start talking about the decision package and items by department priority. Did any of those priorities get funded? How were they funded? What's the cost of those, of that funding? This is critical for you and, and the department, right? There, this is where the two of you now meet. Hopefully mesh, sometimes collide, like, we've never talked about that. Why do, why should we care? You, you may have some of those moments. Remember, you're going to get one of these on a single department, whether they come up here or not. So you're going to see all these. So next slide, please. Those are proposed FTE changes. You're going to see this year, especially in the general fund, a lot of changes in FTE, that loss of FTEs. Some other funds like human services, FTEs flying all over the place. So this, it's interesting and there's a lot of expenses attached to the FTEs. The FTEs also are telling you whether or not they're actually looking. At your priorities. Are they, are they, are they hiring people that are going to help work on your priorities? Or the, whose priorities are they working on or what are they working on? There's some good discussions surrounding that this morning in human, about human services. Here's ARP activities. We're going to have quite a bit of discussion about ARP activities or the exec's budget is almost a hundred million dollars in ARPA money. That is in some cases reallocated outside of what you did prior. There's several new programs in there. Some departments have very little, other departments are going to have some major amounts of ARP activities. In fact, the first one you see actually human services has, has a very extensive slide. It may actually be slides about ARP activities. A lot of which you already know about, some of which will be new. So this is the diversity, equity and inclusion slide. This is a new slide. The, the chair suggested this to. Because this is a council priority. And so we've asked some questions there. This is a new slide. Some departments are, are, have, have kind of like. So we ask those questions specifically, but you know, we'll, we'll see how they answer some department. They are working on this. And that, and I think you'll, hopefully you'll, it'll generate some questions for you guys. Next slide. This is capital projects if applicable in the various departments. Some departments don't have much in the way of capital projects. Next slide. This is budget reductions. You're going to get a separate, and we'll talk about it in a little while here about budget reductions. They're going to talk about their budget reductions, especially the general, the general fund departments are the, are the ones that were really impacted by the, the budget reductions. You'll see that some received some of those budget reductions back. Others did not. The goal here is to really find out about how it is impacting their service delivery. This goes back to things and, and this is. An important slide because sometimes the council works really hard and putting something together, getting additional funding. Or there's, there's conflicts that develop in twenty twenty one. It seems like a long time ago now. About whether or not something is going to get done, you know, people really fight for it. And then two years later you find out, well. So it's a lot, well, how important was it, right? If, if it's taken you two years to try to figure out and are we even going forward with this? Or are we just going to can this thing? So next slide, and that's it from that standpoint. So this is what you're going to see going forward on all the department presentations. Any questions?
Thank you. We also included in the packet, Mr. Bokey. The materials that we requested, but I, I will pause here. That, that is the template of the presentation that every department is designing. As Mr. Bokey said, whether they've been invited up or not, we're, we're getting this. Produced by every county department and will have access to that information. Most are coming up to present. We don't have time for each and every department, but. Most are, will have the benefit of the information regardless. Councilor Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. Along those same lines, then for those departments that are not coming up, do we have a timeline of when those presentations will get here? Cause it could be something we see and we have significant questions about.
The direction to the departments is that all of them be here by the end of this week, October sixth, at the close of business. So that wouldn't just include the folks that are going to come in next week. Which I believe is like Public Works and some other folks. That's everybody. The idea was that we just get in all those early and then, and then yourselves and staff could start to work through those. Along with the decision packets, which we're going to talk about here in a minute and really, and, and come up with some questions for those guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bokey before he proceeds in the rest of the information items that are in front of us. Please proceed, Mr. Bokey.
Thank you very much, Chair Mello. What's next here? I think it's the decision packets. That's the instructions to the PowerPoint that we've worked on, Ms. Chapman and myself. Okay. So these are the, this is right now the general fund decision packet. And I will say. I believe you have the first edition there. There's actually, Finance, to their credit, went back and have, have made some changes. They found some errors. We'll get you the newest packets and there'll be another column there. And that, on the far right, in that column will have the applicable staff member. Because this thing has really gotten a lot larger. It just won't be Paul. It'll be Paul and Rebecca. It'll be the, the, in the staff member, for instance, Assessor Treasurer, it will be Rebecca and myself auditor's office. But when we get into the courts, it'll be Mr. Bridges. When a human services, it, it'll be Ms. Merrick. Public Planning and Public Works will be Mr. Taylor and Mr. Kruger and, and Mr. Swans.
DCB Building Mass Notification from Security Operations Center.
We've been getting these regularly.
False alarm. It's all clear.
So you're going to have that. And so my, I, what, what we're asking you to do is when you come up with questions in, in this thing. These decision packets are designed to. And between that and the PowerPoint, it is just going to generate a lot of questions, right? You're just going to have a lot of, a lot of things come up. Well, I don't understand, why did you do this? Why didn't you do that? And even the design of this, and I think, I thank the Finance Department for, for doing this. You'll see, let's go to the middle. You'll see like Assessor Treasurer, right? Then you'll see an FTE request. So you'll see where that's actually the department request. That column, the FTE request is where the department made a request. And then their actual funding request. Some cases, there's not an FD attached to it. So let's say they're in the Assessor Treasurer's office, reappropriate funding to continue the ascend replacement project. And increase the software as a service budget for software licensing. They made the request of two million thirty three thousand oh four oh. The funded amount is, they got the funded amount. So, and, and it is one-time funding. So they've added those first two or three items, or the first two items are FTE request, funding request. Then you go into funded FTE or restored FTE and restored FTE comes in, especially in these general fund departments. Where they were actually getting reductions and they've added them back in. And then the amount funded and the one-time amount. And then if there is a revenue offset. So a lot of really good information here generates questions like, most of the time they'll mention how they got the revenue offset. But it's, 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 these are, so this is for the general fund. This goes about five pages. So Brian, if you could move that forward, keep going, just, okay. So then these are the non-general fund. And there's, I think, ten pages of non-general fund requests. This gets a little bit, this is where staff's going to be involved. Staff met with Finance this morning on that. Positions start to get, start to move, right? Between funds, funding is, in, in some cases, some goes to the general fund or vice versa. There's transfers of funds. I would also point out that in the budget book, there's a, a, a good section near the front, front part. That shows you all the, all the transfers between funds that they're planning to do. That was added several years ago. We didn't have that for the longest period of time and it's really helpful. I can't recall the page number it's on, but that. That will dovetail with what you see on this, on that chart. So we will get you the, the latest rendition of the decision packets. And along with that, it will have a column with the staff member in it. And we've gone through that. We'll just need a little bit of time to put that together. So this page is, and I can't read it. So I'm going to.
It's the ARPA proposal.
That's the reductions page there. Okay. So this is the general fund reductions page.
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay. And it's small here, so bear with me. This is where you had your base. So there's, there's the columns, right? So again, we'll start with Assessor Treasurer. They had a base budget reduction request of one million two oh two six forty. So this is where Finance told the Assessor Treasurer earlier in the year, hey, your reduction amount is one million two hundred and two thousand dollars. They have now restored to them five hundred and five thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. In a, in a total proposed budget reduction that's in that proposed budget for the Assessor Treasurer of six ninety seven, one sixty. And go back to the presentation, this one, the Assessor Treasurer comes up here, he's now going to tell you, hey, this. This is how I got to that six ninety seven, one sixty, right? So this should all, all, all be put together. In some cases, you see where there was going to be FTEs reduced. So we'll go down to the juvenile court. The juvenile court was asked for two million one hundred and fifteen thousand four hundred and, four hundred dollars in reductions. They restored the budget, seven hundred and thirty one thousand two seventy to the budget. And they, they, we're going to reduce eight positions. Three were restored. So the total FD reduction you'll see is five. Okay, so that's, that's the budget reduction page. So the next page. This is, this is the ARPA one, and I don't know if we've had a chance to discuss this or not. This is a very important page going forward because there's a lot in this. And this is one. You've heard a, a little bit about it. There is some new pro, there are, you know, some new programming in here. Towards, especially when you get down into the area of essential government services. There is no additional funding for public health. So five million eight hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. Of public health money that is not going to be spent has now been re-appro, reallocated to other funding. Some funding has been brought forward this year from this biennium because it's not going to get spent. So this is one. Where you're going to see. I, I think you're going to have a lot of discussion about this because there are some council priorities in here. And then there's some new programming and I think the executive spoke to that a little bit about a couple of, of, of programs. So a lot more discussion, I think, surrounding ARPA and what y'all want to do with that. Next slide. Am I going too long?
No, we, we needed the orientation so we know how to read these documents. You're, you're doing fine.
Okay, thank you. This is the vacant position report summary. So this was also requested by the council. As you see right now, there are one hundred and seventy eight, as of September first, one hundred and seventy eight point nine. General fund positions that were vacant. Sheriff and Corrections sixty one, sixty one point nine in corrections and forty six in the Sheriff's Department. The next line, the next column over then is positions closed. So this budget is proposing to close thirty seven positions in the general fund. Think that there was some mention of this. This is one of the ways that they're saving money by, by closing a number of these positions. Of those thirty seven positions, twelve are in the Sheriff's Department, nine are in corrections. Five in district court, five in assigned council. And one, one, four in juvenile court, one in emergency management and one in the clerk of the court, clerk of superior court. So under other funds. There's seventy three point one eight vacant positions as September first. And eleven, the proposal is that eleven point seven five of those be closed. So overall, there's two hundred and fifty two point zero eight vacancies and the. Proposal is to reduce, to close forty eight point seven five of those vacancies. And then the next page is actually the vacant position report. I won't get into the details of this, but this actually gives it to you by position ID. So you know every single position out there that's available. This is three or four pages long, actually. Go ahead and move it, Mr. And there was also a list in there of long-term vacancies that was requested. And how long they've been, they've been vacant and which one of those were closed. So. Urge you to take a look at that too. That was one of the requests that were made. So are there any questions?
Thanks for orienting us to. These items and this information request that we made. These are essential documents that help inform the executive's proposal. Are there questions about how to read these documents? We don't, we're not intended to debate the content of it, but we want to orient. Members about how to read these pieces of information. Any questions? Mr. Bokey, I am going to ask you to come back to the, the decision package. Just go to the first page of the decision package, please, and. Pick to, to, to walk through. You, you walked through another document and it helped really make. pick two to walk through. You walked through another document and it helped really make sense about how it's constructed. But I really think we need to know how to read this. So can you, can you pick two out of thin air? That and, and walk us through to, to lines that are different so that we know how to read this.
So if we get to the general fund decision package. So go up to the general fund decision pack. So it would be quite a ways up there. And then go down one page. Finance. So, and so let's look at Finance. That's on the top third of the page after District Court. So this is something that's been a council priority, right? Add new, a new procurement and contract specialist one to support increased procurement and contract needs for human services funded by a transfer in from human services. So this deals with the council priority to try to improve the contracting.
The great example.
This is. There you go. Council priority to try to improve the contracting process. And I know you've had a lot of discussion over it. So this is one FTE. That was a request from the Finance Department for two years, and that's 275,340 dollars. It was funded. So in the third, in the column there is funded FTE one. So they did fund it, funded amount 275,340 dollars and they did fund it. Total one-time funding, $2,000. That's probably your computer and whatnot. And the total revenue offset is 275,340. Human Services is paying for that position. That person will be located in the Finance Department. They will be working for the Finance Department, but they will be working on, on items for human services. So Human Services will be, be paying for that since it's a non-general fund item. So that's one example. Let me, I should give you an example of something that didn't get funded. Okay. So let's go down a little further on that same page, Human Resources. So you'll see a number of items there, a number of requests from Human Services. Increase funding for the employee incentive and recognition program. And that was funded. Continue LinkedIn recruitment, online sourcing. That was funded. Online training resource that was funded. Get down to the very bottom there. Continue limited duration, human resources analyst to to source and fill critical positions within the county, including the Sheriff's Department. One FTE, 293,610 dollars and it was not funded. So this is clearly a question, right, that, that is going to have to be asked. Why did, why didn't you fund it? And Human Services are in our meetings. There was an indication from Finance why they didn't do it, but Human Resources would need to be able to say, well, this is, this is why we aren't. This isn't, didn't get funded again. The next one is add a new DEI Training and Knowledge Transfer Specialist position to provide DEI training to all county employees and act as a project manager for various DEI work groups in the county. One FTE for two years and, and that was not funded. And as the other ones were Marketing Support to Build an Employer Brand. And then they, they had a request to increase the wages for 12 interns and that did not get funded. So those are items, those are examples of items that did not get funded.
Thank you for working through a couple of examples so we know how to read these worksheets. Questions about this orientation to these documents, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Chair. Just to be clear, we'll take the, I mean, the Human Resources one you were just discussing. Those are all the things that Human Resources feel they need to be able to do their job. Then it was the decision of Finance, the executive's team to not fund some of these currently. Is that, is that a good way to frame kind of how this is? I mean, did Human Resources say, no, we don't really need this? Or did, who, who made the decision? What gets funded? What did get funded?
Well, one of the reasons we're asking them about their priorities is we don't know from this what their highest priorities were. So, so yes, the department probably asked for these, but when it got down to it, they were probably like, you know, or they, they could have, right? We, we don't know. And that's, that's an important part of the PowerPoint when they make their presentation and they will be up here. And it's also an important question for, you know, staff through you guys to ask like, okay, what were your priorities here? Why didn't this make it? So yes, I mean, they have their process and I know the process ends up in actual meetings, face-to-face meetings. And things, things make it into the, to the budget or not, but you know, I, we, what we don't know from this is what their highest priorities were. And that's why we're, what we're trying to get at when they come up here through that PowerPoint.
But the, the decisions about what gets funded or not, and at what levels in this proposal is the executive. He has to propose a balanced budget to the council. And so I just want to make sure, Mr. Campbell has a really clear answer here.
Yeah. Final decision while I'm hearing is it may have been the department head and the executive's office sat down and said, okay, what's important here? So this may have, we'll find this out more as we interview him was, was this kind of consensus and agreed upon like, yeah, we can still function with this. These were some things we wanted, didn't get funded. That's okay. Versus, well, we needed these things and the executive didn't fund them for us. And we don't think we can complete our mission without them. And so it sounds like it was a little bit more of a negotiated, like they, they had a chance to talk through it with the executive. We'll have a chance to go drown on that. Now basically seeing what decisions were made. So that does help, aren't taking me. I do understand, end of the day, it was the executive that had to put the foot down and say, this shall go here and this shall not. What I want to know is how much communication kind of went on? Whether it was decisions made in, and again, we can drill down on this. Like it was emailed in and the decisions were made without discussion, or was there a robust discussion around the whole package? And then decisions were made because you're going to get two very different outcomes if you're only looking at numbers or if you're looking at how it addresses the mission. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments about this orientation? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Bookie, thank you for orienting us.
Thank you. And if you have any questions, please ask me, or if you get down to the specific questions that we were just talking about in reading the, the decision packet and understanding that, that the applicable staff person in that regard, because they're having discussions as we speak about some of these items.
Our, our policy team is actively analyzing the budget decisions on our request or on our behalf and doing that analysis actively. And, and so there will be an update so that you will be able to see which policy team member is lead for which department to work directly with that policy team member on understanding the decision package or making requests, so on and so forth. Mr. Campbell?
Just a small, small detail here. In accuracy of crap saving paper, will we be provided with printed out copies of this? Or will it be on us to print out this from the online report? Mostly because I want to print it out and then have one put on my desk or.
We'll get them to electronically if you want to print them out. I, I don't think that we'll have, unless you guys want the, the printouts. I believe.
Then have you hand it to me later.
Yeah, I, I was, my understanding is staff's under the the guideline now not to provide printed out reports if you've got them in your. But we'll have to figure it out going forward on the because each meeting you have Human Services, for instance, on Wednesday covers about five pages of this. So you let us know what you, you would like to do.
So the, the default is if they send something to us electronically, staff will not be printing it. If you need staff's assistance to print it for any reason, if that's how you learn, ask and your own council assistant or the budget team, I'm sure will be happy to accommodate the request, however you learn best. Thank you for asking. So we don't waste trees. Okay, we have one final item here under other business. I'm going to invite Mr. Kruger to the podium to help me introduce this item because I am going to misspeak when I introduce it. We know that there, that there was a work done recently in the state legislature to direct the State Department of Natural Resources to explore the management of state forest lands to increase carbon sequestration, carbon storage through sustainable harvests. And the, the, the direction to the DNR through the legislature is such that in order for the, any county to have the State Department of Natural Resources evaluate if there are opportunities in their county for state-owned forest lands to potentially participate in this program and do that analysis to inform that, the county legislative authority, in our case, the county council, the county legislative authority needs to notify the state DNR that we would like that analysis performed. There, there are constraints that the legislature put on the DNR about this, about this initial program. But that, that is what's in front of us is a letter at the very end of the study session packet that indicates to the State Department of Natural Resources that Pierce County is interested in evaluating, evaluating if there are any forest lands in their DNR management within Pierce County that would qualify for this program consistent with the legislative budget proviso and reporting back. Mr. Kruger, please, please further introduce the, the item.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, council. I think, I think you covered it fairly well, Mr. Chair. The couple of details I'd add. This all came about through the 2023 capital budget. The state allocated $70 million to take a look at acquisition of properties on the west side of the Cascades that could be used for trust. So, so additional trust lands to be added to the inventory for the DNR to harvest in a sustainable manner with up to 2,000 acres of legacy forests being protected and potentially coming out of trust. Potentially being added to another category of state management. And so the idea would be that if a jurisdiction agrees to all of this, they would inform the DNR through a subsequent letter, not this letter that we're talking about today, that would identify a willingness to participate. But another letter indicating that, yes, we understand that there's up to 2,000 acres of legacy forest in our jurisdiction. We understand that these properties are located in this place and that the DNR is acquiring with the $70 million additional trust lands so that there's no loss to the, to the revenue stream that's going to state schools, for example, that will be provided through the subsequent harvest of these new lands that would be acquired. So it's, it's, it's balanced. There's, there's no loss in revenue. There would be more lands added to our inventory in Pierce County theoretically of harvestable timber. And then some lands would be preserved, a couple, up to a couple thousand acres. And for those of you that aren't aware, that's, that's about three square miles of, of land. Little, little over three square miles of land that potentially could be coming out of trust and protected for carbon sequestration.
Per the legislative proviso, the state DNR has until the end of this calendar year to respond to county legislative authorities who make this request to do this analysis. They have done to the end of the year to do the analysis and report.
And to, and to identify those lands that potentially could come out of trust.
Thank you. So that, that's why the timing of the letter, here it is, the first of October. If we, if we made this request, the state DNR would have three months, obviously, to complete that with all the holidays between now and then. They would have three months minus to, to do the analysis being requested and, and report to the respective bodies.
They would. And, and I mean, just, they, they may identify that there aren't eligible lands, right? So this is no guarantee that Pierce County will be chosen to participate in this program. But there may be lands that would qualify, and if so, they will let us know. And if the council thinks that this is a good idea going forward, you would, I would put together another letter for council to send to the state indicating a willingness to participate.
Thank you. Questions about this letter requesting evaluation of this potential for this program? Customer member morale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just from my understanding, you're saying that for the legacy programs, 2,000 acres over all of Western Washington?
It, it says up to 2,000 acres of structurally complex, carbon dense forest land currently existing on straight, on state trust lands, maybe transferred out of state trust status. My interpretation of that is throughout, throughout the state, throughout the, well, the western portion of the state. It doesn't say per county.
Okay, so we may only qualify for 500 acres in Pierce County, whatever the number. How, how much of DNR do we have in Pierce County?
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I mean, the, the LB state, the LB state forest, for example, is maybe Council McCooper knows a couple thousand acres. I mean, there's some fairly large chunks of DNR land in the county.
Okay. And you said it would be revenue neutral?
Right. That's the obligation under the capital budget proviso is that any properties that would be taken out of trust are made up for by new acquisitions potentially of larger tracts of land. The, the theory here is that the state's going to go out and purchase lands that are in danger of conversion, right? That might be converting to non-forestry use. So the idea would be to pick up more of those probably younger forests, maybe second, third growth forest sites that are susceptible to conversion. Lock those up, put those into trust. And then the offset would be this up to 2,000 acres of complex forest. And that would be the kind of swap.
What, just follow up question on, on the revenue neutrals. Did, does DNR pay in to the county any property taxes or anything that would go to the county or is DNR just, they don't?
They don't pay property taxes to the county.
So if it's in private hands right now, they pay the, whatever the forest rate. Yeah. Cause I assume they're in a certain classification which is lower than normal property tax.
In, in, in theory, you know, I mean, I, I don't know that there's a obligation that only private lands that are taking advantage of a reduction in property taxes are, are the peeps, are the pieces that would qualify under this program. I think that's a probably good, probably a good assumption. So there could be, I suppose, some revenue lost, right, to the, to the that the county would be normally collecting that's in the forest lands current use category that might all of a sudden become DNR trust. I guess that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I would just say, I guess, best Council Morrell, the idea in terms of revenue neutral is, is to the state trust. Right? That's the idea is that the, the obligation for, for the DNR to provide funding through timber harvest activities will not diminish through this program.
Thank you, customer Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. This is something that has, there's a lot to it. And when you're saying revenue neutral, could it be possible that if they sequester land here, trees here and purchase property elsewhere? Because if it's going to the state and it's revenue, revenue neutral to the state, they could satisfy that caveat by purchasing land in another county, correct? So if they took land here, they could offset with land in another county.
I think that they could. And if that was their recommendation, you know, the council would find it, find that out through their report back. And you would have to decide whether or not you believe that's good policy for the county.
And do we have any idea on the collective collectiveness of other projects that are sequestering land? There's programs that offset land or put land into conservation or perhaps preservation that are taking up land in the county that is open space that could generate revenue for. Case in point, the, the state has a program that I was alerted to regarding tier three property. case in point, the, the state has a program that I was alerted to regarding tier three property and with outstanding Reese water resources. And if that goes through in the rulemaking, it could set back the properties and hinder timber harvesting and that can also possibly come down to Pierce County where it could affect our ability to generate wealth out of the, or revenue out of our timber industry. And when you collectively look at that program with other programs that are available for funding on top of this, I'm just wondering collectively how much land is being taken out of the market, so to speak, and pushing people, you know, closer together.
I mean, that's a complicated question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Because right now, I think federally we're around thirty percent of the land in Pierce County is out of the market. I, I just, I don't know that I'm objecting, but if there were some other questions that I would like them to evaluate, is that possible to have that added into this?
Because I I don't know that the DNR is going to be tasked with answering a lot of economic
It's not a question. That's so much. Well, I, I'm, I'm wondering if, if trust lands are removed from management, well, you know, I'm looking at the junior taxing districts. How would it affect them? And what, what would the program be of, you know, if they're looking at legacy and if the trees are, if they die, what happens to their ability to, to be considered as a collective collection unit for carbon?
I think those are all the things we're going to have to weigh. Depending on what the analysis is, and if there's even a project to be done, that's recommended to be done in Pierce County, which is many, many months away.
Yeah, I just. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Higgin.
Thank you, Chair. We've had a couple of different really good presentations and conversations with WASAC Timber Caucus about this. And I would highly recommend maybe sending your specific questions to Paul Jewell at WASAC about that, because we've talked about it. One of the things with the carbon sequestration that keeps coming up is the idea that it's not just set aside the land and it just sits there, that it's intentional thinning and harvesting to allow the trees to grow. It's also really good around fire prevention because you are going in and removing the stuff that goes, the litter and, and the debris that ends up on the ground naturally, but then it just collects. So I think this is a, for a lot of different reasons in some of our areas and unincorporated Pierce County that, that we have large stands of timber that are not managed. And then we have large areas of DNR. It's, it's just an interesting idea to look at, and I don't think it causes any harm getting this information. If it's, if it's doable, but I, the junior taxing districts is definitely something we should ask about. And then I know the, the, the switch with the the school funding that comes through our timbers on the, timber harvest on DNR is something that I know has been raised by many counties. So that make them pa- pause and on thinking about doing that. So I think they're all really good questions, but if we don't send the letter and ask them to start, we'll, we'll never know. So.
Customer Hoover?
I just, I'm, I'm thinking the pilt, this would involve pilt, the payment live taxes collections to some point.
Oh, I don't see pollen here. I, I believe tilt's different than DNR state.
Okay.
Timberlands.
Federal.
Yeah, the pilt is, 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 is an amount that I believe shows up here as part of our budget process and
For like the National Park.
Yeah, it's a little bit different than that.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a new, this is a brand new program, right? A twenty twenty three capital budget.
Right.
Appropriation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I don't have a whole lot to add. We've got some good questions that have been brought forward. And I just wanted to express my support for moving forward and expressing our interest in participating in this analysis. And when we get back that analysis and we know what kinds of lands, if any, might be applicable for this program, then, then we certainly can dive deeper into the revenue trade offs and and locations of the replacement land. But I think at this point, we should, um, we should go ahead and send this letter in and participate because we know there's a number of other counties that have already done so. And we want to be in the mix, at least to have those options open to us as well.
Thank you, Councilor Denson. We'll ask Mr. Kruger to work with the Chief of Staff to get the letter out to make the inquiry of the DNR to do the evaluation and include Pierce County in the evaluation as they are doing with several other counties. And to submit it with my signature. Thank you. Is there any other business for council and Monday study session by council members? Councilor Cooper?
Thank you, Chair. The award for the outstanding local government contribution for the Pierce County Council for creative use of ARPA funds for the creation of multi-user trails throughout our region. It was a very wonderful event that I, that I attended. And actually, you know, it was a box lunch, but I don't know who made it, but
Off it was the same people as last year.
It was actually pretty good. It had ham with, I think it was pear slice on it or something very unique. And they had some presentations by, there was a gentleman, I don't recall his name, who was very instrumental in getting several million dollars for, for trails. And it, I just, you know, here we are.
Was it Larry?
We're adding it to our collection, Councilor Hoover.
Yay.
Thank you for representing us, Councilor Hoover, at the Trails Conference and accepting that award on our behalf. Many members are very active in promoting how important trails are for our quality of life and active recreations. Thank you for that. Very exciting. As long as there any other business for our council.
Not today, thank you.
Seeing other business before the Pierce County Council in study session, we are adjourned.